Questions, comments can be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing ssr@buxportmaine.gov. We're calling 469-7368. Roll call?
I can't hear you. I'm old.
I'm talking as loud as I can.
What about the mic?
Roll call.
Okay, Counselor Eastman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Counselor Ormsby.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Rankin. I know their names.
You did a nice job getting through that.
And Mayor, Counselor Morrison submitted his resignation. We will deal with that later in the agenda.
Okay. Presentation of Town Council Recognitions. Rich.
To try to project my voice and be close to the microphone so those at home can hear me, I'll stand this way and I don't need to turn my back on you, councilors. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. We are here this evening to recognize Karen Boss of Meriden Studios and Rick McHale of Rick McHale Photography with this year's Spirit of America Award for their countless hours of volunteer work photographing the youth of RSU-25 in the many events and activities sponsored by the schools. Webster's dictionary defines a volunteer as a person who voluntarily undertakes or expresses a willingness to undertake a service. Karen Boss. Karen has been volunteering in the schools for over thirty years, where she has taken pictures of the youth performing in band concerts, chorus, plays, graduations, sports, and any other RSU-25 event. Karen makes sure that the yearbook is full of pictures from whatever activity or event that the students of RSU-25 participate in. Though not her Facebook page, you can even find some of her pictures uploaded on Buck Sport's boards when Rick can't be there. Karen, thank you for thirty-plus years of commitment to the youth of our communities. Your commitment and dedication do not go unnoticed. And this plaque says, "The Town of Buck Sport Spirit of America Award 2023, Karen Boss. Your dedication to the youth of our community has provided a photographic record of all RSU-25 school activities, sports, and events for many years. Thank you." And Rick McHale. Rick of Rick McHale Photography has created Buck Sport Sports for a landing spot of the photos he captures of our youth who participate in middle school and high school sport activities, and he posts these pictures on the Buck Sport Sports Facebook pages for all to see. There are thousands on top of thousands of photos on this page. This is great for the families who are out of town or unable to attend these events, for memories of the athletes and their families, and for coaches to use as a moment of praise or even a teaching moment. Buck Sport Sports has been around long before the pandemic, and Rick continues to provide this benefit even today. Rick has also been known to attend youth sporting events as well as a few summer travel softball tournaments. When not photographing himself, when not photographing himself, he is teaching and trusting in his granddaughter Abigail Wilson, who may or may not be taking his photo tonight. This leading to the next generation of photographers for the purple and gold. Rick, thank you for your commitment to the youth of our communities. Your commitment and dedication do not go unnoticed. And yours reads, "Town of Buck Sport Spirit of America Award 2023, Rick McHale Senior. Your dedication to the youth of our community has provided a photographic record of all RSU-25 school activities, sports, and events for many years."
Well, thank you very much. Don told me to do that.
Again, if you all will, please help join me in congratulating Karen Boss and Rick McHale the 2023 Buck Sport.
Speech is yours, if you are, Rick, please.
For those of you who are here for the awards, feel free to leave when you want, but thank you all for coming tonight. These two are so very deserving. Thank you, Town Council.
Karen took my senior pictures twenty-three and twenty-four years ago.
Right.
In the middle of Central Street. She doesn't like to be reminded of that.
Well deserved. Thank you. Our next item is minutes of previous meetings. We have Town Council minutes from nine, seven, twenty, twenty-three. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's six-zero.
Come here.
Okay. Our correspondence, we have two police calls, one on Roanoke on nine-two, twenty-three, and one in Orland on eight-twenty-seven, twenty-three. Comments on those? Item six is ordinances to consider introduce. We have none. Item seven is discussion items. Regulatory review, we did not have.
That's correct.
And that's been scrapped, Rick.
The, the person who was asked about that does not need that accommodation any longer, so we didn't have the meeting.
Next is Buck Memorial Library update. Do you have somebody here?
We do.
Counselors, Mayor Stewart. This is Lassard. Just doing this again as a, the quarterly update to keep you folks in the loop in what's going on across the, across the street. I've given you all a highlighted version of what we're doing. I'm not going to go through it because I know you're doing a good job moving through these meetings, a lot better than we do. So, I have given you, I hope you have time to look these over. If you have any questions, just give us a holler. Come see what we're doing. We're in the midst of a three-week renovation with all-new shelves that came from the main state prison, all-new carpeting, and a lot of work. But it's going to be, it's going to be pretty neat when it's done, so. A lot of other things going on here, but take a look at it, and we appreciate the continued support of the town with the taxpayers, getting for, getting for their dollar here, so. Any questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
Keep up the good work.
Get out.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Main Street Buck Board update.
As for, there's just one copy of that, you pass it around, and then each one can take a copy of each of those.
Okay.
Council members, and Sue, thank you for the opportunity to give an update on that Main Street Buck Sports. Live them well. Some of the projects we've been working on is continued work on the Project Canopy. That'll be highlighted in October nineteenth, six p.m. meeting. Education meeting on the love of trees at the library. That, that whole effort is being spearheaded by Meg K. The, there was the installation of the Museum in the Street signs. This is a joint effort led by David Doan, Rich Rotella, and the Buck Sport Public Works Department. If you hadn't had a chance to go around and see those, I think they're getting a lot of, lot of good feedback on that. You know, I was at the Orland River Days, and people commented how, you know, they've been enjoying that. So, I thank the town for helping in that effort. Like I said, we, we had a tent at the Orland River Day, we had a tent at the Buck Sport Bay Festival, which was kind of the Museum in the Streets kickoff thing. There were some tours that were given of it and passing out the flyers. Right now, we're in major preparation for the International Maritime Film Festival. That's going to be this weekend. We're partnered with World Oceans Observatory and WRU. There'd be a three-day event, Friday night is the Oysterman Concert, Sea Shanty Storytelling Lively Group that performed at the library last year and was so well-attended, we decided to move it to the, to the Alamo this year. Saturday is three separate showings of the jury films, nine films in all. So, there'd be a nine-thirty, two-thirty, and a seven o'clock at night showing. We're real excited to find out this year, this week, that one of the directors, Phil Cuomo, from Montreal's coming down. His film is, is Women Captain's, Women Captain about a lobster woman. And Phil has won over six-hundred-and-thirty awards at various festivals throughout the world, so. I think we're pretty lucky to have him come down and share his, his experiences with that film and, and get a taste of Buck Sport. We're putting him up at the house for the weekend, and so, hope to show him a good time and hopefully there's a good crowd there for, for his film. It'd be a shame if he came and we had pretty empty house, but I think we're going to have a good showing. We've been advertising it real well. We got, we were on WABI the other night. We were, WRU's been doing a lot of great advertising for us. And I've seen articles in a lot of the newspapers, so. I think we're pretty well set and hope, hope we get a good showing. And we continue to try to expand our board membership, and at this time, we aren't making any efforts to seek a new executive director. Our, our objective is to restore the, the purpose of Main Street and the town and the, build our reputation back up so that when we go out to seek an executive director, it's a more inviting position. We're planning, setting plans for the second annual Samores Bar during the fireworks after the, the Festival Lights Parade, so. That, that was a big success. I remember during the budget hearing, you said you hoped that came back, and so we listened to our council members.
Are you going to be a snowman again?
Yeah, well, who knows? Might be something different. So, so, you know, please think about coming and joining one, one or more of the festivities at the, at the festival. I think that, you know, there's been a lot of good effort put into that, and I think we present this. Sun, I forgot to mention, the Sunday film is actually a Disney film, but it's a true story of the SS Pendleton, which tanker that's sprinting to off of Cape Cod in nineteen fifty-two, I guess, and, and the Coast Guard efforts to, to rescue those who, who were in the, the half of the ship that stayed afloat. And we have a couple Coast Guard members from Belfast coming to speak before the, for the film, so. I think that'd be a good addition to the movie. We, we decided to have it at two because we were thinking about a later movie, but it, I found out the Patriots were playing at four forty-five, so let's get it out of the way before the Patriots game. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paul.
Next is agenda items. First is resolve twenty-twenty-four eighteen to sell the nineteen eighty-nine tanker chassis to Mark Stevens of Arlington, Maine. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Let's only bid you ahead, just that one?
Yeah.
Yep. All those in favor? Opposed? Next is resolve twenty-twenty-four nineteen to utilize five thousand dollars from the public safety building reserve for roof repair. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Resolve twenty-twenty-four twenty to approve the MOU with Harold Alphon Center for the Advancement of Maine's Workforce. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Item nine is resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. The first is council resignation for James Morrison. We have a written resignation from Mr. Morrison. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Next is discussion of appointment to fill the unexpired term of office. What we, because the resignation came in after the time to put out, have it during our normal election. Council rules state that we can appoint somebody until the next expired, until the next election. So, it would basically be for almost a year's term until January twenty-five, the election of twenty-four. What we've done in the past, and again, this is just history when we've had this happen. This doesn't mean, this is, I'm just giving you guys some history of what we've done. The council has looked at former councilors, people that aren't going to run for office. We felt that it was, was the best way to put it.
Unfair advantage.
Unfair advantage, thank you. That was the word that we used, right? I knew you would, I knew you would remember.
Really?
For somebody that was running for, that was thinking about running for a seat, to point them to a seat for just a short term to fill in, so. That's sort of the history. We've had a couple, I think, in the last several years that we've had to fill, and we've done it that way, right?
Yeah. Nominating people tonight?
I think we can.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to get it filled, so.
Yeah. I'd like to nominate Paul Gobbin. That's second, though.
All right. All those in favor?
Wait. Excuse me.
Sorry.
Usually ask the public if they have any comment on.
Oh, I'll ask the public if they have any comments on that.
I'm Julie York, also a former council, councillor, and I would be honored if I had the opportunity to fill the seat if that was another option.
Correct.
As well, and hopefully get back in the seat again at some point.
Okay.
All right. I thank you very much, Rachel.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment. I, I do agree with everything you said and just want to reinforce it that, and we've talked about this before, I think it was a little over a year ago, perhaps longer, but I, I, this is a tricky business when the, I think, councillors should be democratically elected whenever possible, and we're following our rules, but I think to go based on the recent history of this council and to nominate somebody who has won an election in this town in the past and as well isn't, doesn't have, has no plans now. Whoever it is, and it can do whatever they want when election time comes, but has no plans to run for the seat, that they are just filling temporarily, I think is the, is the best way to do this, to eliminate that unfair advantage. And I just want to say that again because I, there are a number of people, I'm sure, that are capable of filling the, the spot, but I think Mr. Gobbin fits that bill. I have no issues with Mr. Gobbin at all.
Luke, you were first.
I have just a procedural question that people might be wondering, because I'm wondering. It says the next election. I'm assuming there'll be an election in June on the school budget, no?
It says the next regular election, which is defined as November. The November election is the regular election, which is what? If this resignation had taken place before September seventh, it would be as a separate, it would be a paper ballot, but it would be on this. But since it happened after that, the next regular election is November of twenty twenty-four. Yeah, no, that.
It's a good question.
Some communities have special elections, some, but our charter is an appointment until the next one.
Nancy Minett, Buck Sport. Just a couple of quick things. I re, I think I'm remembering a little bit of the history when Jim Morrison was put into a place that was left because he was the next one in line during a voting time?
No. I originally, that was an argument that I made, that I had said, I think that Jim should go into that spot because he was the next in line.
Okay.
The council denied that, and they reappointed.
Okay. So, that, just in my thinking today, I was just thinking like a, a policy that was in place, you know, right? But I'm just wondering if that's possible, you know, so that when you run into this, you've got it all, pardon me?
It would have to be a charter change.
Oh, okay.
That we'd have to vote on.
Okay.
That you folks would have to vote on.
Okay.
Just like having a charter change for that.
Okay, that's great. And I just would like to know a little bit about Paul. I don't know Paul. I mean, is there any, is that appropriate or not? Like, just, we was in the commute, just, who was going to be sitting in that seat?
He was a former councilor, served two terms.
Maybe I didn't live it.
Yeah.
Okay.
He got done, I think, in.
I was on the cap, too. He was, his last year was my, was Danny's, in my first year.
Nineteen?
It must have been.
Yep.
Okay, and he termed out?
Uh, he decided not to run again.
There's no term limits.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, there are no term limits. No term limits in Buck Sport.
Unless they're self-employed. Unless they're self-employed.
Okay, thanks. No, that's.
The discussion that occurred at the time about going back to the prior election and taking the, the next person was a robust discussion, but because in some cases, there's no, it's not a contested race. How far back do you go if there's not another person there? And because of things like that, the council decided to leave it the way it was. That was the, didn't offer any other alternatives for doing it.
I just wanted to say that I would be filling the, I would be willing to fill a position if somebody else didn't want to, so.
I, I, being completely honest.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Has anybody talked to Paul?
Yep. Any other nominations? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm Ralph Chapman, School Street. Just a quick comment to put this matter in the context of what I understand the constitution of the state and the country to be, which is that although the ultimate power in our constitutional democracy is often referred to as held by the people, you ask the question just slightly differently. Who has the responsibility for the maintenance of our constitutional democracy? Who is it that is charged with protecting it and maintaining it? It is not the people. It is the elected officials and the appointed officials by elected officials. And I make this comment just to put this in context in order to offer a suggestion. The context is that in filling a vacancy, according to the town charter, you in essence are fulfilling your responsibilities for the maintenance of a governance structure. And my suggestion is that you can make certain that you consider that as the primary criterion. There are eligibility requirements in the charter for who's allowed to be filling the seat, but from a constitutional point of view, it's really the responsibility that you accepted when you took an oath of office, and that's the reason for the oath of office is the importance of maintaining and protecting the constitutional democracy. And that's actually the reason why there are impeachment provisions to remove someone who violates their oath of office in, in case they are not protective of the constitutional democracy. So, the reason for the oath, of course, is to make for a very important responsibility of all elected officials, and I thank you all for having taken that responsibility. And when you are appointing someone else to also take that responsibility, I think that it's worth recognizing that your responsibility is to do what you can to have the person who takes that seat continue to participate in good governance of the town. So, I, I just wanted to put that in context, and I thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Don White, Buck Sport. I have no, Mr. Gobbin is a fine man and has served the town well, and that's not the point I'm trying to make. I think Counselor Ormsby, when Mr. Morrison was first appointed, he had run for election. Help me if I'm, I was here. And that he, he, he was not a former councillor at the time that he was appointed and to serve, I can't remember whose position it was.
He wasn't, he wasn't appointed.
He wasn't.
Oh, no.
He wasn't given an interim, short-term.
No.
Until the next election.
He was.
I believe it was David Key's spot. David Key left early, and then he ended up.
I mean, you folks are free to do anything you want. I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty clear, but I, I stand corrected if that's, if that's true. I just thought that he was not a former councillor at the time that he was appointed.
He, Jim wasn't appointed.
He won a special election, didn't he?
He won, he beat Robbie Carmichael by one vote.
But it was, that was not a special election. That was in the general election.
Okay, it was a general.
He won by one vote, and there was a recap. You'll remember, there was a recap. But when Jim took, when Counselor Morrison, excuse me, took office, it was as the result of winning a general election.
And it was, it was for a one-year term.
Okay.
It was expiring. David Key had left.
Counselor Ormsby, did you nominate Jim for that position? And Counselor Eastman, did you nominate me for that position that, that night?
I don't. That's my memory. My memory is that's what happened.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, 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 I just question the, the.
I think that's what.
It doesn't have to be a.
Yep, I think that's what kind of started that conversation.
That discussion?
About what we do, and I remember strongly being, I was the only one, strongly on the side of the next person in line and vote should, should get in there.
And but.
Which we get.
I see, you know, I definitely see now the appointing is. Well, the last time Mark and I ran, we were going to the Rand.
Covid.
Yeah, yeah. So, if there hadn't been anybody else, you know.
Yeah, who would you?
Who would you pick?
You'd have to make some process that would be difficult.
And I think that's what we looked at.
Just trying to clarify. It was a while back. I, I, to see what the process is. But you're also, you're also free to do what you want, so I understand that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion and a second for Paul Gobbin to serve the rest of the term of resigning. Counselor Morrison, all those in favor? Opposed? Will you contact Mr. Gobbin?
I will contact Mr. Gobbin.
Next is sign the November seventh, twenty twenty-three election warrant.
Seconds.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Hold on.
Yep. I'm not going any faster than you.
Being the manager and the clerk is probably one more thing than I, one more hat that Miss Ed can do with.
Jacob is going to come back and help us with the election.
Yes, he is coming back and help us with the election. And Jackie Hunt is doing the job on an interim basis while we look at candidates and see what we're going to do next.
We have no deeds or discharges or quitclaim. Town manager report. Item three.
The Community Garden Committee has been meeting to discuss the community garden concept and have been concentrating on using the lot next to the American Legion. However, before they get too far down the road, they wanted to check in with the council as to whether that location could be approved for community garden use. It's town-owned. Is there any objection to the use of that lot for a community garden before they go down the road of planning and all that kind of stuff?
Chief, you see any objection to that?
Where was the lot again, just my own? Like, you know, it's on the right side.
It's, it's on the mechanic's side of.
Well, it's mechanic all the way through, but I can.
Right, it's.
Ed Buck's here, right next to Ed.
No, it's, it's actually not, at least not based on what we saw in terms of what he and the American Legion owned versus what the town and when we looked at the D. From what I understood in our last meeting, it sounds like it's further away from Ed's property than, than what we originally thought.
Off of Mechanic Street or?
It's, it's on, it's mechanic the whole way around that corner.
Rich, can you bring it up on the man? Is that possible?
I can turn the TV on.
Okay.
I can't reach the box.
Isn't it? Sorry. You just moved my arm.
I thought it was on the corner right across from Bill Revnan and.
Yeah, it doesn't interfere with traffic.
It's the back end of the American Legion lot, backside.
It's that map side, yes.
Have you talked to the abutters, are there any abutter issues or anything?
We have not had, because we still were, we're, we're pretty, because we were not sure and we, we wanted clarification before we went any further. We've met like four times. And after looking at the tax map, it, it was a little bit different than what we had originally understood. I believe that Chris Johnson had had an initial conversation with Ed that I am not sure of that. Our plan, because of the way that the lot is, is to put in raised beds. Because they're gonna be more accessible, easier to water. Yeah. And unfortunately, nobody else is on the co- on the committee.
I, I, I would, I would say that we would probably be in favor of it as long as it passed muster with, with the chief and where, and the abutters that were around. Does that sound, that sounds good to everybody?
That's the lot we're talking about.
Yep. That's a long reach up there, the chief.
It's because we're watching.
Yeah, sweet.
Christmas, we're getting them extended stuffs.
Since when do we give out Christmas presents?
We are this year. No pressure, guys, everyone's watching you. No.
No?
It's one across.
Right across the street, that little one.
This one?
Nope.
No.
The other way, to the right of the one you have highlighted. See, that's the Lumen Warren, and then right across the street, yep.
That's Lumen Warren, so right there.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody's okay with the concept if we, as long as we check out those boxes.
And then the other clarification was water.
Yeah, well, we talked about installing a seasonal spigot at the Gardner Commons location if that would have been approved, and so I'm assuming the council would extend that same courtesy to the garden if it were in that location.
Yeah, because we could come from Lumen Warren or Legion Hall, if that is.
And just to give you a little bit of background, the seed library, the pre-seeds that we give out at the library this year, we start eighty-four families this year. And there is really keen interest, especially for people who are living in apartments or who don't have a lot of land to have a community garden, so I think, I think it would be a real benefit to the town. And the fact that it's in a place that's walkable is also beneficial.
So that's roughly ninety-one by fifty, fifty-five?
I think what we went with was seventy, uh, which one was on, we're here. He, he actually walked it and, and based on what he was seeing, it was about seventy by.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, just places that bottom one.
Yeah.
So that lot is currently owned by the town.
Yep. It must have been part of a legion lot.
I, I go back for years and chart, yeah, I think I'm gonna realize my goals and come down.
We all set on that?
Yep, yep, so I think just, we'll check, Sean, just to make sure that traffic, I mean, that's around that corner and stuff too, so.
Yeah, yeah, I will get it.
Yep, alright, thank you.
Tricia, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Gully Road nineteen eighty-one seasonal maintenance requirement, Jacob Buck Pond to map nineteen lot three. A property owner on Thurston Pond requested the town carry out its obligation under the nineteen eighty-one Gully Road maintenance discontinuance to seasonally maintain from Jacob Buck Pond to map nineteen lot three on Gully Road. Since the town council had never altered the vote that required seasonal maintenance, the town this year did some work on that area. However, there are people in the community that believe that that seasonal maintenance requirement should be removed. What is the pleasure of the council in regard to this matter? Do you wish to hold a public hearing for discontinuing the seasonal maintenance requirement on that or leave it the way it is? You don't have to know right this minute, but that's a subject that's been raised that we're gonna have to have a discussion about at some point. So far, five applications have been approved for the Habitat for Humanity Safety and Accessibility Repair Program that the council provided money for, for safety and accessibility improvements in seniors' homes. There were six applications, but one is from Orland and the program is lis- is limited to Bucksport residents alone. And they've gotten some new signs that show work has been done by this group that are gonna be going on the project sites and we're hoping that will get other people interested in having work done. Bucksport Bay Healthy Community Coalition reports that they now have twenty-three people enrolled in the Thriving in Place Program that assists seniors with obtaining services that allow them to stay in their homes longer. Mike McGinnis is retiring from the Highway Department on October fifth. He will have been on the crew for forty-seven years in the Highway Department at the time of his retirement. And he will be on the agenda on October twelfth for recognition. The Health Center will be holding two drive-through flu shot clinics in the next couple of months and will also be booking appointments for the new covid vaccine when they, which they anticipate having within the next week. You do not have to be a patient of the Health Center in order to get a flu or covid shot. And I also want to thank the Bucksport Bay Business Coalition, who has offered to take on the tree lighting project for this year for here in town. We've, it's been spradic the last few years, but they've offered to take that on. Public Works will be helping them find a tree, but Rich will be discussing the parade of lights later on, but it's another, gives us another event for the season.
Very good. Any questions? Alright, item twelve is public hearings and approval of licenses or permits. First item is a public hearing on the contract zone agreement for solar array in map zero zero two, lot zero one one. Open the public hearing. So this is to approve a contract zone agreement for that lot. Changing it from. There's a two zoning, two industrial. Any questions or comments? Talked about this for a while.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Order two.
Gotta find the right page. What was the vote?
Order two.
Order two, who were opposed?
Danny and I.
Danny and you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, next is a liquor license, carriers mainly lost, or how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Next is a liquor license for the crumpet. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Next is a festival permit for the Bucksport Skate Park Committee. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Uh, next is a festival permit for Ghostport to extend the time to ten PM. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Chief, you okay with that?
I believe we, we've had a lot of conversation about the ten o'clock time and I would refer to DC Winchester on that because I didn't take you over the day. So the second part of it is gonna be a second trunk or treat held.
Can you come up and talk, David?
Thank you, I was just gonna yell ahead.
Sorry.
The concern was the, the ten o'clock hour. There's gonna be a second trunk or treat held by the Y at the Marina from six thirty to eight. And then at eight, from six to eight o'clock, there's gonna be an event at the Alamo, so that's gonna be the reason for the later, the later time. And I don't see any issue with that because it's gonna be basically a, a show at the, at the Alamo, so I think we're good.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, next is a festival permit for the holiday lights parade and fireworks. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Alright. Item thirteen is items on the agenda for the council and the public. Anybody from the public have, anybody from the public have anything?
Yes, ma'am.
I had promised you all that I wouldn't speak without being prepared, but, you know, I get to these meetings and I just wanted to say how exciting it was today. We live on the corner of Elm, way up at the top, and we've been seeing kids go by on their bikes with their skateboards, you know, tied on their back, heading to the skateboard park that they put all that work into. So I want to congratulate that committee and the commitment from the town to make that happen. It's just, we've never seen kids doing that, you know, so it's every day, they're just heading there after.
I have a, I have a student that, actually, it's a George Stevens student that gets dropped off, off every day in the Blue Hill Consolidated School parking lot with a bar. And he's just out in the parking lot every day and we've had probably three or four conversations about there's no place to skate. And he just wants to practice and he gets kicked out of everywhere else. And so I haven't kicked him out of the parking lot and I said, as long as you're not, you know, running into cars, it's fine. And he's very excited that they're having that, this, so he's, he says, I'll be there, so I'm excited too.
John?
Just a couple items. These festival permits got me thinking, how long, would we, Main Street Bucksport need one for a smores bar?
Nope.
No. Okay, I couldn't remember what happened last year, but I want to make sure that.
Rich, Rich told me to say no, so I'm.
Okay, great, alright. Uh, and the other thing is, uh, I didn't always agree with Jim, but I respect the effort that Jim put in to be in on the town council. And I just, as a public member, I wanted to recognize that and thank him for his service.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider an item from the September seventh meeting, agenda item, item twelve D, to refer the PPI program to public referendum at the June twenty twenty-four election.
That was a motion, right? I'll second that.
Discussion?
What work is gonna be done between now and then to?
We're gonna work to inform the public, but I think that's, we spent the money, we should give the voters a chance to decide the matter.
And we're gonna leave the plan as is, we're not gonna tweak it?
There's no. It's a concept and, you know, I think we should let it develop. I mean, I don't think we're gonna have a time, we have an opportunity to bring sidewalks to ADA compliance to the tune of a million dollars or, you know, somewhere in that neighborhood. We're never gonna have that kind of resource to do that, and this goes way beyond that.
One of the things I, and I, I kind of, I, I forgot to mention it when we had our last meeting and I think there are two things that people are looking at. One, with the, with the power lines, because I heard that, that's aesthetics.
Yep.
This is safety and accessibility and, and making part of it better for a lot of people. The aesthetics piece could, we can sort of look at it at a different time, but this, I, I agree with you that this is the time that the money is there. And I think we've been told and Rich has sort of intimated that, that money's going to go to other places in a hurry if we don't and then we're really behind trying to catch up if it is something that we want to do. And again, I, I agree, I think we're not making the decision to do it, I think we're just making the decision to pass it on to the voters and I think that's part of our responsibility, so.
And I think as part of it, I mean, it's clear from what we heard from people in business owners, we may, we may need to do a little bit more to educate, inform, but I think we can do that as a council.
And I think that.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think that's one of the things that we did here and I think that's one of the things that has to happen. And I think Rich and Caitlin, when they were talking about it, understood that. And they're, you know, to have those questions answered. And so when the folks do go to the polls that they are informed.
Agreed.
And then make the decision.
Informed and then that gives us the okay, I mean, there's, could still be tweaking to do.
I assume so.
On the final touches.
I assume so.
Richie commented in the last meeting, though, that the window for the engineering had closed, is that correct, Rich?
We've expended the money through the DOT grant that we got, so if you want to change the concept, you have to go another way around it. So what we've completed as a community, the members who showed up to these open houses, we have the concept. The final design and everything's gonna come out when the fagot gets to it. So, no, we do not have it consulted any longer.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Pardon me for taking your time, but.
No, no, no problem. That's what we're here for, believe it or not.
There are many occasions in which a fundamental problem with a representative form of government is what decisions get made by the people, what decisions get made by the representatives. And this is, I think, a classic example of the pros and cons of whether you as the representatives of the people make the decision or whether you send it to the people to make the decision. Clearly, I, I, I don't have to detail the pros and cons of both ways in general. But referencing my earlier comments this evening, your responsibility is good governance. So, in my opinion, good governance means to weigh the question of what's best for the town. Is it best for the town for you as representatives of the people to, who by the nature of the job that you're doing are informed about the project and what it means and what the consequences are and what the costs are? Is it better for you to make that decision? Or is it better for you to let that decision be made by the public regardless of what level of education or information they have for it? Obviously, that's, uh, that, that to me is the, is the question that you're trying to deal with.
Well, we can't make that decision to spend that amount of money. We can only decide whether to send it to referendum. We can't decide to spend the money without having the town vote on it. All we're, all, all the question we're asking is do we want to send this to referendum?
We can't authorize expenditures of over three hundred thousand dollars by this council.
So what you're saying is, in order to spend more than three hundred thousand dollars, you need to send it to referendum.
That's correct.
I stand corrected, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good clarification.
Anything else? Alright, we have a motion in a second for a recall of a.
Reconsideration.
Reconsideration of, recall. Reconsideration of an item that was on the last, last, uh, last agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Five to one. Thank you. Any other discussion items not on the agenda? I would just like to also publicly thank Jim Morrison for serving. I would just like to also publicly thank Jim Morrison for serving on the council. It takes a lot of time and effort, and Jim certainly put in the time and effort. He, he had a constituency that he certainly took care of and let us know when he needed to. So, and I appreciate the time and effort that he did, and believe it or not, I will miss having him on the council, so.
Absolutely. I'll second that. You took the word, so. Yep. Wish him the best.
Yep. Upcoming public hearings or committee assignments or meetings? Do we have anything coming up?
Infrastructure on the twelfth. No. No, it's not Maslane. It's the other one. We went through this two days ago. Was it Maslane or was it? What's that?
I know Paul wanted me to speak about properties. I don't know if that's what you're talking about.
That's one of the items on the infrastructure committee, but there's another item that was also on infrastructure.
So, we should probably put it for six o'clock.
It is six o'clock.
And it'll be posted on the agenda for what we're talking about.
What we're talking about. One of which is the, the list of properties that our code officer has provided to the council and that are in a state of sad disrepair that need attention in the community and the status of those. And so we were doing that at a committee meeting to allow for more back and forth interaction on that topic. And there's, there is another.
I bet between now and next week you'll have to figure it out.
No, I'll, between now and the time I go upstairs, I'll remember, but right now, no.
All right, there's nothing else. Take a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody.